Good evening, welcome to the December 6th Regular Board of County Commission Meeting. Do I have Pastor Rob Jones here? Pastor Jones? If you guys would just bow your heads for a minute, we're gonna do a quick prayer. Father, we just thank you for this evening and Lord, we thank you for giving the County Commission wisdom tonight to make good decisions for all of your people. And Lord, I thank you for clear communication and a wonderful opportunity tonight, Lord Jesus, to represent these citizens. Amen.
Stand and join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order, which I probably should have done before the pledge, but we have no minutes for approval tonight, but we do have two resolutions. Do I have Ms. Allard and Ms. Carroll here? Come on up.
Can I bring everybody?
You may bring everybody you'd like to, ma'am. Well, Ms. Liz, you're a famous face here. I'm gonna read this and if you guys... Yeah, they're beautiful. I'm gonna read this and if you'd like to say something right after, we would greatly enjoy that. Whereas homelessness has caused or hastened the death of inadequately housed low-income persons of Brevard County, and the spirit of the holiday season of giving provides an opportunity for affirmation and renewal regarding the commitment to end homelessness. December 21st, the first day of winter and the longest night of the year, has been designated National Homeless Persons Memorial Day by the National Coalition for the Homelessness. Whereas in the season of generosity and sharing, citizens of Brevard County are encouraged to commit themselves to promote compassion and concern for fellow citizens, especially to those who are poor and homeless. Whereas in remembering and keep the collective commitment to preventing deaths in the future, now therefore be it resolved, the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners does here designate December 21st, 2022, as National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Zanka, second by Commissioner Goodson, and Commissioner Tobias, you have something, sir?
You called me out on it, Madam Chair. I discussed the November 15th meeting, it's District 3 policy, I will not vote for more than 12 resolutions per calendar year unless placed on consent by one of the commissioners. Therefore, I will be voting against this item, not on the basis of the merits, but on Policy 254, Section 1, Subsection A of the District 3 Policy Manual.
Commissioner Tobias, it might be a little loophole, since we just have newly elected, we just started over.
Madam Chair, you've been here, though, for the new folks.
I know, but it's kinda different when you're chair, because you kinda get all the staff's resolutions, so, okay, sir. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-1, but he really has a heart for homeless anyways, but ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Chairman Pritchett, and the rest of the commission. My name is Amber Carroll, and I'm the Executive Director of the Brevard Homeless Coalition. I am joined today by members of my staff, as well as the Brevard Homeless Coalition Board of Directors, the Continuum of Care Advisory Council, and other direct service providers in our community. We want to thank you so much for recognizing this very important day in our community. Also, want to just take a moment to recognize Ian Golden and his staff, who really stepped up over the last two hurricanes in our county to ensure that our most vulnerable had shelter, and so I just want to thank you for that, thank him and his staff for their excellent leadership in that. Homeless Persons Memorial Day is a big deal. This year, we will memorialize the lives of those who've died on our streets or in our shelters from the conditions directly related to their homelessness. In many cases, these services, and there will be three, will be the only commemoration of their lives. We are in the process of identifying the individuals by name who've passed away this year while homeless. Advocates, friends, community leaders, and service providers hope to bring attention to the need for more resources to provide affordable housing, emergency shelter, and medical care for the most vulnerable citizens. We want to invite you to attend one of three of our... Three of our memorial services in the county this year. At 1:30 on December 21st, we will have a service at Daily Bread. At 3 o'clock in Cocoa, we will meet at Matthew's Hope, and at 5 o'clock, we will meet at Under the Bridge Ministries at Sand Park Pavilion in Titusville. It was a great opportunity to come together and remember this very important day. One more thing, the point in time count is coming up on January 30th, 2023, and that is our response to this as well. It's a day that we count all of those in our community who are experiencing homelessness, and our hope is that we can identify those who need resources and plead for more in this community to meet this need. So I just want to thank you for that, thank you for the opportunity to be here, and see if you have any questions for us.
I just want to say thank you for everything you do. I love it when organizations get together and try to work with each other instead of, you know, in competition with one another for the common good, so I appreciate everything that you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to thank you for what you do. I know you don't get paychecks for this, and I appreciate that you really care about other people. Blesses my heart a lot, so thanks. It's our honor to get to give you this resolution.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Great.
All right, a little bit tighter, and the person in the red behind Liz. You can see me, I can see you.
The resolution?
Vice Chair's talking to you.
Sorry. Ready? Here we go.
I'm a consistent bastard.
Is that a... Can I read the resolution, the bylaw that you put in?
I just made it up.
All right, we're moving on to the resolution, recognizing Brevard County Library System. Do we have somebody here from libraries? There you are. Whereas Brevard County Library System has been providing the citizens of Brevard County with library access and related services for half a century, and whereas libraries in Brevard County began with clubs or groups of citizens banding together to organize and start library programs in Cocoa, Cocoa Beach, O'Gally, Melbourne, and North Brevard in Titusville, and whereas in 1959, the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners and the cities implemented Florida Statute 150, which provided county funding supporting to the five municipal libraries, and in return, the five libraries agreed to serve all county residents. And whereas the Brevard County Federated Library System was established in 1971, and on November 7th, 1972, Brevard citizens voted in a tax referendum that established a countywide library tax district to fund the operating cost of Brevard County libraries. And whereas the Brevard County Library System has grown over the last 50 years to 17 branches and a mobile library from MIMs in the north to MICO in the south, and has over 240,000 registered users, a collection of 1.2 million items, plus extensive online resources, specialty departments including Talking Books for the Print Disabled, the Creative Lab, Genealogy, and the Brevard County Historical Commission. And whereas libraries are community spaces designed to meet community needs and anticipation of those needs, the Brevard County Libraries continues to be places where individuals welcome to learn, explore, and discover new opportunities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim and congratulate the Brevard County Library System on its 50th anniversary, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 6th day of December, AD 2022. Madam Chair, let me make a motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Goodson, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0.
Well, thank you. I'm Wendy Boss, I'm the Director of the Brevard County Library System, it's an honor to be with you today. I want to introduce Michael Boonstra, who is our historical librarian and genealogist. Also with me, I have Dr. Rochelle Kenyon, she is the Chair of the Brevard Library Advisory Board. I have Mark Brums, and I have Edwin Pete Poole, and they are with us today to accept this award. We had an event on December 1st, over 110 people, and for individuals who ask me, are people still using the library? Our door count is about 130,000 people a month. People come in for a variety of things. We just received an award now for... From Career Source Brevard for being their number one referral agency to get people jobs, and we also received an award from Brevard 211, the Stars of Brevard County, for our work with youth. So it's very exciting to be part of the library at this time, I'd love to see anybody come, use, talk to us, visit us, see our mobile library in action. It's no longer just a place where we have books, but we provide resources for children to learn and grow with technology, coding, and more. So on behalf of myself and the board, and I want to thank Michael Boonstra again for putting together a wonderful, wonderful celebratory event on our 50th.
Thank you, and I realize people, you know, have a big misunderstanding when it comes to how important their libraries are to them, but I would say all you have to do is drive by the parking lot to see just how many people just use the library services, so thank you for everything you do and everyone that supports libraries.
Does anybody have any items they'd like to have pulled separately?
We have a great team, I couldn't do it out. I always say that the people in the library that work in the library are the magic that make it all happen.
All right, great.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Zanka, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. We are moving to public comments, I have one card from Mr. Na... Don... Mr. Smith, okay.
How y'all doing? Good to see y'all again. Happy holidays. First of all, I want to say it's such an honor to have my name on the ballot this past election to represent my constituents and represent citizens of Brevard County District 2. Much love and mad respect to Commissioner Tom Goodson, who I love tremendously. He's an OG, who we call an OG in the game, and I love him to death, and you are a good Commissioner, and I respect you. I'm done, you don't have to worry about me ever running for nothing else ever again. I'm done. I'm about to turn 40 years old in a couple of years, and I'm a CEO in the private sector, and that's much more successful and admirable for me to do my thing and not worry about votes and marketing to constituents to have change. But I'm more so up here now to propose my last finale, I guess you would call it, because now I want to make sure you guys take care of my children, take care of my babies, take care of my jits, because I love them, and that's what I do this for. This is why I invest my time, my energy, my ingenuity, my intellectual property, to bring to the commission, bring to constituents, to show them that our children are our innovation, our children are our future. So with that being said, I know I have a minute and a half left, I want to... I know this proposal, verbal proposal, is more so guided towards the school board, but I don't think I'm suitable for the school board meeting, so I think I'm more suitable to ask you guys this. I want to propose a 3-2-1 takeoff plan, and what I mean by that is, Brevard County students work hard, even though their environments are different and the students have different avenues of going about ways of their behavior, and I understand that. Yet, I think we should offer them an incentive for their good efforts and for going through the curriculums of a Brevard County citizen. So I want to propose that Brevard County, along with the municipalities that they represent, as well as the school board, and the United States Border Customs Patrol, gather up in partnership in intergovernmental relations to create a program where all graduating high school seniors with a diploma that has had no disciplinary problems receives a passport on behalf of the Brevard County... On behalf of Brevard County, saying thank you, on behalf of us as a city, I mean as a county, representing us going through the curriculum results, now go see the world, because Brevard County is not it. This is what we need, the ingenuity we need to innovate our children, to see the world, to bring innovation back to Brevard County, which I've done, which I'm doing. And I think that would be more suitable for kids to go to school, be good, and get good grades, because to go see the world on behalf of Brevard County, that's the number one initiative. Love you guys, have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, I got a... Yes, please. I just also want to say that you have been most enjoyable through this whole session, and I wish everybody ran the way you did. You were delightful.
Appreciate it.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. You may be gone from running, but I hope you're not gone for good, because we enjoy you and we appreciate your enthusiasm. Do you mean like a real... An actual passport?
A real life passport, like...
Okay, that's what I thought you meant, but I just wanted to be clear.
Oh, yes ma'am, because I mean, like I said, now that I have a little time to talk, I can breathe a little bit.
That's okay.
Yes ma'am, because I haven't had the opportunity to be able to see the world until I went to college, and being able, first of all, having the requirement of a Spanish or a foreign language to graduate high school, I think, a passport to be able to go see the world, having that as a requirement, is more so of the initiative, and have Brevard County be that trendsetter, to show them that we all do care about our students. And yes, we understand that we have an environment where behavior is an issue, yes, as every county does, but we're going to take the initiative to initiate our kids, to show them that we care about them, we want them to see the world, we want to congratulate them for going to curriculum as a Brevard County citizen, and being a substantial citizen by not having any behavior problems and getting good grades and having a diploma. And whatever option they choose to go to the professional realm, or the educational environment, or the workforce, it doesn't matter, they have a passport to work hard, to be able to travel, to go enjoy a weekend in Puerto Rico, a weekend in Mexico. So, yeah, yes ma'am, I appreciate the question, but yeah, I just think you guys should use that in the government of the relations and with the municipality, because it's not all on you. And that's why I thank God that you guys are the county commissioners, because you guys supersede certain areas where children have opportunities where you don't have to go through the school board. So, yes ma'am, a passport, United States Customs Passport, on behalf of Brevard County and its partnering... Partnering agencies, yes ma'am.
Thank you for your explanation.
Yes ma'am, thank you, have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Commissioners, we're moving into Item H. Item H1.
Good evening, Commissioners. H1 is a petition to vacate, it's a public utility and drainage easement at 1405 Sykes Creek Drive, Deanna Shores, in Merritt Island, District 2. The petitioner is requesting vacating a five-foot wide public utility and drainage easement to allow for the construction of a pool, there's no objections received at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodson, this is your district, sir.
I have no issues with it.
All right, do you want to make a motion?
Okay, yes, I'd love to make a motion for approval.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Goodson, second by Commissioner Zanka, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item H2.
H2 is also a petition to vacate, this is also a public utility and drainage easement, this one is at 1385 California Drive, Holiday Springs at Suntree in Melbourne, District 4. The petitioner is requesting the vacating of a five-foot wide portion of a 10-foot wide public utility and drainage easement to allow for the construction of a pool, at this time, there are no issues.
Commissioner Felton, this is your district, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Felton, second.
I'll second it.
By Commissioner Goodson, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item J1.
Item J1 is a performance bond reduction for Pangaea Park, Phases 1 and 2, District 4, south of Pineeta Boulevard and west of Lake Andrew Drive. It's being requested by the Vieric Company for $5.7 million of the cash performance bond provided with contract dated October 26, 2021. As of October 28, 2022, the items to be completed are electrical service for the lift station and some segments of sidewalk for the pedestrian bridges. If the bond reduction is approved, we will still be retaining $2.3 million. There's no issues.
Commissioner Felton, your district, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Felton, second.
I'll second it.
By Commissioner Goodson, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item J1.
Good evening, Commissioners. Item I1 is requesting the Board adopt a resolution authorizing a loan in a principal amount not to exceed $20 million from the Florida Local Government Finance Commission pursuant to its pooled commercial paper loan program, and this is in order to provide interim financing for various capital improvements to the county's solid waste disposal facilities. We're requesting three actions. Request the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the resolution authorizing the borrowing of not to exceed $20 million in principal amount, to delegate the authority to the Chair to execute the resolution and various closing documents with respect to the issuance of the loan, and authorize the County Manager to approve all necessary budget change requests and implement this request.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Do you have any questions? Motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Felton?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Zanka, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item J1.
Item J1 is a performance bond reduction for Pangaea Park, Phases 1 and 2, District 4, south of Pineeta Boulevard and west of Lake Andrew Drive. It's being requested by the Vieric Company for $5.7 million of the cash performance bond provided with contract dated October 26, 2021. As of October 28, 2022, the items to be completed are electrical service for the lift station and some segments of sidewalk for the pedestrian bridges. If the bond reduction is approved, we will still be retaining $2.3 million. There's no issues.
Commissioner Felton, your district, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Felton?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Zanka, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item J2.
Good evening, Commissioners. This item is regarding restoration of the engineered dune in the South Beaches post-hurricane Nicole, and to provide the introduction of the item, is our beach management coordinator and beaches and boating and waterways program manager, Mike McGary.
Good evening, Commissioners. As Virginia said, this is a project for the South Beaches in District 3. In October, the Board previously approved a beach and dune restoration project in the South Beaches for damage associated with Hurricane Ian. Tropical Storm Hurricane Nicole caused much more significant damage, over three times the erosional damage to the shoreline, so this project, this item, would allow restoration of that damage, seeking FEMA reimbursement, and temporary funding options to fulfill that portion of funding, not immediately available in the tourist development beach improvement fund.
Commissioners, any questions, or what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Zanka?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item J2.
Good evening, Commissioners. This item is regarding restoration of the engineered dune in the South Beaches post-hurricane Nicole, and to provide the introduction of the item, is our beach management coordinator and beaches and boating and waterways program manager, Mike McGary.
Good evening, Commissioners. As Virginia said, this is a project for the South Beaches in District 3. In October, the Board previously approved a beach and dune restoration project in the South Beaches for damage associated with Hurricane Ian. Tropical Storm Hurricane Nicole caused much more significant damage, over three times the erosional damage to the shoreline, so this project, this item, would allow restoration of that damage, seeking FEMA reimbursement, and temporary funding options to fulfill that portion of funding, not immediately available in the tourist development beach improvement fund.
Commissioners, any questions, or what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Zanka?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Right, item J3.
Good evening, Commissioners. Item J3 is approval of six cultural support grants in the amount of total of $90,000 coming from the Tourist Development Council.
That was short and sweet, you have any... Okay, Commissioners, any discussion, or...
I would just say, I don't, I don't myself have an issue with these, I kind of went through and I saw, I like their plans, they were pretty concise with their budgeting and very direct on what they needed those funds for, and I think that they'll all enhance their projects, so I'll support it. I like the fact that we're helping six agencies for $90,000. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion on the table to approve, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Goodson, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes...
No.
Oh. No conversation, you're just... So 3-4-2 against?
3 against, 2 for. I mean, 3-4-2 against.
3-4.
3-4-2 against.
Okay.
I was for it.
You were for it?
Yeah.
It was 3.
3 of us are for it, Derek? No, I'm with you.
You're with it.
Commissioner Tobias, Commissioner Felton, voting no.
And the rest of us voting yes.
Okay, so it passes. Item J4.
Yes, ma'am, this is for two major event grant awards, one for the Cocoa Beach Air
Thank you. I do have one comment card on this. Commissioner Goodson, did you want to say something? You want to speak first?
I want to, no, they can speak first. I just like a question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Rich Hensel, did I get your name right? Close.
Uh, Rich Hensel. On behalf of, you know, the county commissioners, the TDC, and the cultural committees, we thank you for all your support over the past 13 years. Thunder on Cocoa Beach Offshore Boat Racing, this event has seen an annual increase of out-of-town visitors and has made this event so successful. Without our continued community support, we would not be here. With the increase of cost of goods, our P1, which is our sanction body and our television partner, increases and everything else in this current economy, we respectfully ask for your continual support. $87,000, which is consistent with all our other major events in our communities, we are requesting the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Zanka has a question for you.
Did Commissioner Goodson have questions for him?
I noticed that $200 was what you said each person would spend for each event, correct?
Uh, correct, with our economic impact study.
And how did you drive it that number, $200?
Well, $200, we have different stages, but we've done with the, actually with the commission, with, I'm sorry, with the TDC as well with the commission and everything that we've worked on for the last 13 years, our numbers have gradually increased. So that's where we have the $200 over our past.
Okay.
2022.
I have a question. I was kind of looking through your application and I noticed you have listed on there that you're a nonprofit.
Uh, we have a nonprofit, which is Freedom Fighters.
So the Freedom Fighters is your nonprofit, but you applied for it under...
It is not our nonprofit. That's our nonprofit that we chose to be part of this program.
But you applied for it under the Thunder on Cocoa Beach, under, let me see, I believe I have your application here. Let me see. Do you remember the name of the organization you applied for it under? Uh, let me see, I have it. If you don't... Yes, Thunder on Cocoa Beach. That's the title of the event. And the organization is Space Coast Superboats LLC. That's the name of the application. You didn't apply for it under the nonprofit.
I don't have an answer for that.
Space Coast Superboat is a company that...
Okay, you have to come up to the microphone. Can you tell us who you are?
Space Coast Superboat is... I'm sorry, I'm Kerry Bartlett, Cocoa Beach. Space Coast Superboat is a company that founded, the LLC that founded the boat race and operates the boat race. The Freedom Fighters is our chosen charity for the past few years, and this year we've given them over $10,000 for them running the merchandising, VIP, and the ticket sales.
I saw them, and is that the same as the organization, as the people that wrote the recommendation letter?
Uh, I believe they wrote a recommendation letter. The hoteliers have written rec...
Sorry.
Recommendation letters. Are you referring to one that's in the application?
Yes.
Uh, I believe they did write one, yes.
I believe it was from a...
Jenny Pruitt?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, is she related to Kevin Pruitt that's on your organization's board?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is a formality here. Uh, are we going to be voting on these individually, or how do you, how do you want to handle that? What, you're the chair, so... Okay, great. So you want to start with this one?
I certainly do, so we're gonna...
Okay, uh, can I ask one of these gentlemen a...
Please.
In your application, you mentioned, uh, in the 2021, uh, over the three days, there was a estimated visitor expense of somewhere in the neighborhood, and you did a good job breaking up somewhere in the neighborhood of $14 million, I believe.
Estimated economic impact.
$14 million. This was a couple of years old though, right? So, out of curiosity, what do you think that would be, what do you expect it to be this year?
Well, this year we saw a tremendous increase in the number of not only national visitors, but international. In 2021, we didn't have the international teams because they were stuck overseas. 2022, we had those. We had an additional nine teams, and we're expecting an additional eight for 2023. So we had all of that additional international business we didn't have the year prior.
Okay, so like a 50% increase?
Uh, probably 30% increase.
Okay. A 30%, I, I was just, okay.
And I don't know the exact number.
No, no, that's fine. I'd say okay. Madam Chair, um, I don't know where anyone is in on this, but I'd certainly appreciate this to go back to the TDC. I think there are some numbers that are on, that the board received when they voted on this that are drastically different than what we're hearing from this applicant. There, there's an extra zero involved, 30% to 300%, and I think we should give the board the ability to vote on this, given that they have accurate numbers. I don't know where the board is on this one.
Um, I will just say I have a real issue with, and whether it was intentional or not, you, you represent yourself as a nonprofit, but your application is Thunder on Cocoa Beach. It's not under the nonprofit.
We, we've never represented ourselves as a nonprofit.
It's on your application. It's a type of organization. It says nonprofit as part of your application. I mean, whether that's an error or not, and then it, you have to understand, I'm looking at a letterhead that says, "I am a Freedom Fighter," which is your organization, correct?
No, ma'am.
Is that a different one?
That's a different one.
Okay, because that Jenny Pruitt is related to one of your board members? I guess that's where I'm a little confused. It gets a little muddy.
Well, she started a nonprofit a number of years ago that fights human trafficking.
Okay.
And she wasn't our, so numerous years before, we provided money for other nonprofits. 2021...
But there's no way for us to see that because you didn't apply as a nonprofit. Because at least with the air show, I can pull the 990s and see if they're actually donating to charity like they represent. With yours, I can't see that, so... I don't know. I, I'm not comfortable with these large events anyhow, like on principle, but, I mean, I, I don't know where the rest of the board is. I just, I don't, and I would have liked a more comprehensive budget, better breakdown on, it was a little bit clearer and a little bit easier to understand revenues and expense. I know you explain it, but I don't, I'm not comfortable with it the way it sits now. So I guess it's up to the board at this point, where they're sitting.
I'm comfortable sending it back and let the TDC do a little more work on it and coming back with some data.
But do you want them to do that if they don't have the votes anyhow? Do you want them to go through the process? If they have the votes, then I would say send it back, but that would depend on the rest of the desire of the board. I don't want to waste their time either.
Okay, um, I, I don't know either. It's actually, I had a little more comfort with this one than the next one. But I, I do know that a lot of your proceeds, when you're done, you do make donations to charities. So I, I just know that about your reputation, but it's, it's up to the board. I'd be comfortable sending this back and get a little bit tighter numbers and giving it one more round here.
Right.
Um, but where, where are you guys at? Commissioner Tabia?
Well, first of all, hats off to the two new commissioners that are holding their cards tight. I thought that that was a compromise, sending it back, to be clear, I'm not going to vote for it, no matter what, what comes of it. I just didn't want to see an affirmative because some of these numbers were not a fair representation of, and it's not your fault, your, I'm not, I have no issues with the numbers that you provided. In fact, I appreciate you providing those, just the numbers to the, the board who made the decision on that were a little inaccurate. But no, I'm not, I'm not going to be voting for this under any circumstance. I was just trying to...
Wait now. It's, it's, he's, he's always true to who he is. It's, it's, it's actually quite comforting. Commissioner Goodson, this is kind of going on in your area, and I know we're working to get a little bit more diversity so that all of the districts have a little bit more equity, so, um, your, your plea on this is going to mean a lot. I, I kind of found comfort in it, but again, it's, it's what you guys want to do, but...
Since I've been called the OG today, and since Felton comes before Goodson, could I move for Felton to answer his questions?
I wouldn't mind a bit. He just doesn't have a light on yet, so...
Yeah, he needs to turn it on.
Turn it on for him.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, um, Commissioner Felton, sir, you're up.
I think Representative Commissioner Goodson for helping me out there. I don't have a problem sending it back to TDC, letting them tighten this up, and, and then we can review this again.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I agree, because the $200 confuses me, so, um, don't want to hurt you. When, when is your event, sir?
It is May 18 through 21, 2023.
Okay, so you have plenty of time to get back and answer the questions of the board, correct?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
And I would just encourage you, if you have to resubmit the application so it's accurate, either under your nonprofit or the, that you're, said that you're running the event through, or change your status to an LLC as part of your application.
Yeah, I, I'd have to look at it, but yes, I agree.
I'm sure it was an error, but I would fix that.
No, certainly.
Because without knowing you, I, I'm going to suspect...
It's not been brought to our attention up until this point.
Yeah.
And, and I will just add, we're not grant writers. We're not, you know, so we put on a tremendous event, a 14-year-old event that the county and, and the city of Cocoa Beach and Cape Canaveral and Port Canaveral enjoy, so we'll do whatever we have to do to, to satisfy you guys.
I, I have to also say that the amount of people you draw and the way you've been managing your budget was, was impressive to me. And I must say too, Commissioner Zanka is really good at, we're, we're paying close attention to these dollars. I thank you so much for that. So if you guys would go get that straightened out and, and we'll have every line where it should be, I, I think we'd get more comfortable.
Absolutely. Thank you. In our events, we'll bring over 100,000 people this year.
You, you do, you pack it out. So, um, Commissioner, do I have a motion to send it back?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, a motion to send it back. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move to the next item, the Cocoa Beach Air Show.
Any cards, the applicant here?
I don't think we do. We got the applicant? Do you want to come up for questions, sir? And fill out a card later. So commissioners, um, do you have any comments, questions, or Commissioner Zanka?
Hi, I'm Kyle Smith, by the way.
Kyle Smith, okay, because we're used to dealing with Mr. Lilly.
Yes.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions, if, if that's okay? I think most everybody read the packet. Question, are you part of the, the National Air Space Foundation?
The foundation and the show, yes.
All right, is this the only event the foundation runs through it?
Yes.
So the foundation runs no event except the Cocoa Beach Air Show through it?
This is the, the only show that it operates, correct?
So it, this organization exists only for the Cocoa Beach Air Show?
Yes.
Okay. Um, in your letters of support, you have letters from Orange County, New York. Did you receive any funding from them when you had your air show there?
In Orange County, New York, no.
What about the city of Cocoa Beach? I believe it was about $5,000.
Something like, yes.
City of Sanford?
No, there's no funding through them.
Okay, and...
Through the city.
And I know you probably don't do the 990s. It's probably Mr. Lilly that does. I went through them, it's through 2013 to 2019, because we, we've been here before, and I've, I've been pretty vocal on my non-support of it because part of the pitch, at least in the past, from Mr. Lilly was, and a, and a commissioner that was friends with him, was, they do a lot of charity work. They do a lot of charity work, and what we, when we pulled the 990s, there was no charity work for most of those years. And I noticed that on the 990, he doesn't have a compensation level for himself like he did before, because in 2018, he showed a compensation of $86,67. And then the same amount was in 2017, the same amount in 2016. I see how that sort of shifted because he, as a board member, he was compensating himself. So he's not here to ask the question, so I'll ask you. Now, in this existing budget, looking at the budget for your application, is, is there compensation for Mr. Lilly or Lilly Productions in there?
In this budget, no.
Okay, and then there's no way for us to know that because I can't see your books. I just see production costs and...
Correct, yes, I understand.
Okay, um, any charitable activities this year so far?
Yes, we have the scholarship, the Cajun Scholarship in perpetuity with Florida Tech.
Okay.
Which was, I believe in our...
That's probably all I have right now. I guess for me, I, you know, and I'll just share this with the board. I'm not sure if anybody has any additional questions for Kyle. I didn't mean to put you on the spot because you're not...
No, I'll, I'll answer any questions best I can.
And again, I, I think that these events are great for the county, and I'll just say that, you know, these are well-established events that don't need a government subsidy to operate. And I just don't think it's a wise use of our tourism tax dollars. I think we need to focus more on events that bring new major things to the, to the city, or to the county, or to the organization, because we have no way of knowing how they're spending their money. And I just, I don't want to increase someone's profit margin because the TDC, you know, has the money available. I never liked these large event monies because I think that they don't, they don't help enough people, so... It's not personal, Kyle, so I apologize for putting you on the spot, but I'm not going to support this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, you mentioned a scholarship at FIT, right?
Yes, sir.
And how much is that scholarship?
It's in perpetuity, I believe, about $35,000. And we have just awarded our fourth scholarship yesterday.
So you've awarded four, $35,000 four times, right, or four different?
It's $35,000 total in the scholarship. That continues to grow. And it's...
Have you funded that this year, or in this budget year?
Yes.
So you don't have to take that money out of this, right?
It's, it is secure, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And that's with Florida Tech, yes.
Thank you, Chair.
And I'll just comment. I believe I saw the Facebook advertising for funding that, those Cajun scholarships. My husband's been a donator to that scholarship.
Yes, yes, yes.
Because he's always been supportive of, of anybody that does that, so it's, again, it's not personal. I think for me, it's, it's just a, it's a matter of principle. I, I don't like the idea of, and by no fault of your own, we don't have open access to your books, and these are large amounts of dollars. I think that could better benefit other organizations trying to get their events off the ground, so that's just kind of where I sit.
Okay, which, um, I just, um, some, some thoughts on it. Mr. Krantis, do we ever get a breakdown of the budget afterwards, how much they spent, the revenues they had coming in?
Yes, ma'am, I believe we do have a, a budget detail from 2021 that we can, we can pull out.
Okay, so after this event, will they turn in their, their financials of how the revenues and expenses?
The, um, grant is based on reimbursement, so they have to submit all their expenses in order to get reimbursed for those, so we would have those.
Do we get all of them with your revenues and everything? Do you turn in a full financial statement for this project?
I don't know how thorough that financial statement is, but as far as the reimbursement, as Mr. Krantis mentioned, we scan everything, have proof of any type of expenditures that are part of the grant.
I, I'm thinking if, if we continue down this path and we do this, that might not be a bad idea for large grants that we give, so that we, we have good, we feel good about how we place the tax dollars. Something else I was thinking, I'm, I'm thinking that if, if we continue to do these, maybe there should be like, if this is a great event, we'll support it for X amount of years, and then we'll diminish it off, so hopefully people are out able to do a productive event. And if it's not productive, maybe reevaluate. I think Commissioner Zanka is right in being able to open it up for other, you know, events going on, but I don't know how much funds we have left. I know we had a good year bringing in tax dollars, but that doesn't necessarily mean we should give them out in a hurry, but I do know air shows bring in some good visitors, or they certainly entertain the ones that are there. But I voted against this in the TDC, and I'll tell you why, is because you draw the same amount of people as the airboat show did, so I, I thought it was a little, you know, interesting that it was such a large amount, so I don't know how to rewrite this either for the TDC, but I'm thinking you, maybe we shouldn't penalize people for doing a little bit better on their budget by giving them less. So on that, I, I probably would approve this for the same amount, if you guys want to approve it, that we did for the airboat show, but that's, that's my comfort level right now, but you had a lot of good questions. Were you comfortable with the answers, ma'am? So...
Hit my button again. Yeah. Again, I'm, I'm just going to emphasize to this board, and you can, I can forward the 990s, but they're each about 25 or 26 pages. From 2013 to 2018, there were no charitable activities for, for that organization. And this organization's sole purpose is to, is to basically do the air show, so what aren't we seeing? And I just think it just looks slimy. Whether it's, it is or not, I just, I'm not comfortable with it. I'm not going to vote to support somebody's profit margin. I'm just not going to do it. to vote to support somebody's profit margin. I'm just not going to do it. I don't like the way it went down last time, and I certainly don't like it now, the more, you know, digging you do. So, I won't be supporting it at any level.
Commissioner Felton, I know Commissioner Goodson's going to ask for your input, so we're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Representative Goodson. Um, the one thing that I, I was thinking about these, these two events, um, leading up to this meeting, and having worked in a hotel for a long time, um, you know, it's, it's a cyclical thing with, uh, tourists. So, we have a season, we have a shoulder season, we have, uh, we have a summer season with families and, uh, coming to Brevard from Orlando. So, this is the weekend after Easter. And that traditionally has, has not been a great weekend for travel, uh, because everybody's back in school, uh, spring break is over with, the kids aren't out of school down here. So, when we're talking about the tourism development tax, I think the sole purpose of it originally is to put heads in bets. And I do think that people come here for the airshow. That's my thought.
Okay. Um, so, just counting the votes up here. I know Commissioner Tabia is going to vote no. And so Commissioner Zanka doesn't have comfort with it either. Commissioner Felton, you sound like you're in favor of it. Um, Commissioner Goodson, I don't know really where you are on your vote, but again, I would probably support it at the 53 amount that we gave the other fella. But I do want to see financial statements after to see what type of, um, revenues and expenses they had. I, I think I want to start seeing these whenever we give large grant funds. Commissioner Zanka, new light, ma'am?
Yeah, and I'll just say this, you know, without having full and complete access, this event's going to happen, whether or not we subsidize it or not. We just have to decide whether or not we see that it's deserving of that subsidy. It's a successful event, or you wouldn't be doing it. Everybody's making money, or you wouldn't be doing it. So, it's not, you don't do this event out of the goodness of your heart. Everybody makes a living off of these events. And if this wasn't a well-established event, you would have a be, a better, um, a better chance getting support, at least from this Commissioner. So, I'm not going to support someone's big profits. I just won't do it. I think we need to use that money for events that, new events we're trying to bring here, not events that already generate the, the tourism that you're talking about. So, that's all I'll say about it. You guys can hammer it out.
Will we be comfortable maybe sending it back till we get financials, and then bringing it back?
You may be, but I don't know.
Okay.
I'm not going to support you. I'm sorry, but, um, Commissioner has just too many questions that you can't get back to the Board with. Uh, you know, not only not promoting charitable work, you know, uh, there's going to be other issues in the county that we could hopefully direct that money in the right direction to help the county. And I'm sorry, but I will not be supporting it.
So with that, I'm going to make a motion to deny this request.
I have a motion to deny in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass, uh, fails five zero. Passes- Did you say the other one, sir? I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. You're with us? Okay. And I think we, um, have one more card. I have a public comment card from Mr. Rick Hefelfinger, sir. Did I miss something?
Yeah, J5. That was the Spectrum.
It got, yes, it got, um, yes, guys, that's mine. I added it in.
Oh, I, I didn't even have it on mine.
I, um, had a call from Spectrum. They're trying to get a, uh, grant from the state to help, um, finance putting, um, broadband lines throughout the whole county in areas where people can, um, afford, they can't afford really because it's low-income areas. Other companies can also apply for this, but I just put a letter, if you guys support it, sending it up to help them to get some funds. Okay, I have a motion approved in a second by Commissioner Goodson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes five zero. All right, public comments. All right, now this time, right, Mr. Hefelf-
Rick Hefelfinger, 2000 Juniper Drive, Cocoa, Florida, 32926. Um, good meeting tonight. I don't usually give you guys compliments, do I? Good meeting. I liked, showed some, people did some research, like that, like that. I don't understand why you want to poo-poo all over my boat show. I want to see those hydroplanes. I don't think giving them some, well, hey, giving them money, they ought to be using it right. If they're established, maybe they don't need it. So, okay, but I sure hope, I sure hope you boat guys come, come, come to Cocoa Beach. Um, I, I, I was here and I commented a little bit. I had some questions, and I went, I didn't get a chance to finish them. I, I need to kind of give you a little bit of a follow-up. I had asked the question on whether or not I thought your jobs were part-time or full-time. And after doing a little research, I think, I've come to the conclusion they're part-time, 'cause I know, looking at financial disclosures, there's not just one person that has other jobs. You guys all do. And that's maybe, maybe I'm just naive. That's the way it is. So, I haven't seen some stuff from the new commissioners, but I understand it's not a full-time job, and I'm not going to hold you that tight to it. But there's a lot of important stuff that goes, so, again, I, I saw a lot of, looks like you guys are working it, so I'm glad to see that. Um, I did have some, some other, I had started to ask the question of whether or not you guys are fiscally conservative, and I, and I'm really worried that we're going to bust the cap, the tax cap. That scares the crap out of me with this inflation stuff. I think we've got to find a way to hold that line better. Maybe we can't afford all the services, you know? I hate to say it, but maybe we have to throttle back. And I'd like to see some, some ideas come when some of these stuff comes up. Saving the money from the TDC, maybe we can use that for something else. I don't know. Maybe that's what you're thinking. Um, there are kind of questions about, like, accountability, too, you know, or is that a Republican value? And being accountable means you're willing to answer questions from your constituents, like me. Even the questions, if you're in opinion, are driven from some kind of tin hat conspiracy theory. Now, last year, we had some of this tin hat accusations that, you know, oh, these crazy, you know, whatever conspiracy theorists, sometimes conspiracy theories are true. So, I just hope you guys have a, this new Board, a little more open mind when people bring some stuff. So, I hope that's one of your, uh, one of your values. Um, how about transparency? That, that sounds like a Republican thing. You're all Republicans, right? I would say this, how you respond to reasonable public records requests says a lot about whether you're behind transparency. Because sometimes in the past, it's been really hard. You know, you guys need information to make decisions, and so do we. So, I would like you guys to kind of work on that one this year, 'cause I'm going to be making some public records requests, and in the past, that's been a little bit hard. One final thing, got some friends at the Libertarian Party, Brevard County. Um, we applied, paid money from Keep Brevard Beautiful to sponsor a park, 'cause that's our civic thing. We're going to clean up the park, but you get a sign. Well, you pay 75 bucks. You get a sign that says you're sponsoring it. I don't understand what the problem is, but we couldn't get the sign. They haven't given us our 75 bucks back. We're trying to be good citizens. So, if you guys could look into that, and I think, Rob Felton, or that is your district, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was actually a little pleasant tonight. We're going to move to Board reports. County Manager, sir?
I have no report.
County Attorney?
No report.
Commissioner Goodson?
No report.
Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I have two. Uh, they're both dealing with, uh, advisory boards. I sent an email out, um, with a, uh, draft email that I'm requesting that you, on behalf of this Board, send, uh, to a couple of municipalities. Uh, there is an extraneous board that should have been done away with ages ago. It was to help build radio towers. Uh, those radio towers were built, uh, three years ago. Apparently, there are 16 municipalities that have to sign off and say they're okay with this board dissolving. 14 of those 16 have given their okay. There are two that are stagnating, and from what I hear, it's not the elected officials. It happens to be staff. So, that being said, these, uh, letters, and I'm okay with the being changed, but I would appreciate these, uh, being sent out to the city of Cocoa and the city of Melbourne. Um, and if we do anything in the future, uh, I would ask that we probably, if we create any boards, I hope we don't, but if we do, I hope we put a sunset clause on them, because this is so darn old that now we're upgrading this, and this board that was initially put there to help build them should have gone away that long ago. So, uh, I'd like to make a motion to give the Chair the ability to send out a letter to the two munis, to hold out municipalities to get them to sign off to doing away with, uh, uh, this extraneous, uh, board.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Tabia, second by Commissioner Felton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes five zero. And your second item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And on the same note, in April, I handed out homework sheets, uh, regarding, uh, advisory boards. Um, this was non-mandatory boards, and, uh, I appreciate the, um, everyone filling them out. However, there are a couple, uh, new commissioners on here, and I said I would certainly wait before I initiated any action until I got the opinions of those new commissioners. So, what I have done is I have a, uh, handout here for the new commissioners with the exact same form that the current Board filled out. And again, if there's not at least two folks that are interested in looking at doing, dissolving a board, I don't want to waste anyone's time with it. But to be clear, these are non-statutory boards, so in other words, we're allowed to do away with them. And as a heads up, uh, there were four boards, uh, that at least two members, uh, were interested, two of the three that are currently up here. Now, things might have changed, but, uh, that's a, a matter of, uh, public record, and it's included in here as well. So, what I would ask of the two new commissioners, there's a handout here, if you would bring back your suggestions. And I've included, uh, the, uh, the charter for, for the Board, as well as that one-page or two-page accomplishments of the Board and the attendance. So, you can certainly do, uh, more research, but this is the, uh, low-hanging fruit. If you'd bring us back that, uh, with your suggestions on whether or not you think it's worthy, or whether or not you think we need to take a look at disbanding that, I would greatly appreciate that. I have a copy here for the Clerk, as well as, uh, everyone else, but I'm only asking for, you know, Commissioner Goodson and Commissioner Felton to lend their, uh, uh, opinion, no matter what that be, on those boards. So, uh, that was it.
This is what you shall be doing over your holiday vacation.
Yeah, this sounds exciting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Chair, I have a question.
Jump in, sir. It's conversation time.
Bring them back to a Board meeting. Send them to you, Commissioner Tabaya. Send them to the Chair. Where do we, how do we handle that?
Madam Chair, you know, for Sunshine, I, I would, I would appreciate if, you know, as, as well as the public, that it just be brought back to the, to the, to the Board meeting. And to be clear, I wouldn't make any action until, not only we had this, but until the public had the ability to look in and lend their support on it one way or another.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Tabaya. Commissioner Felton?
I really didn't have anything, um, other than we'll go through it, and we'll bring back our recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair Zanka?
Have no report.
And I have no report, and I'll call this meeting adjourned. So, they're all settled with it?
Oh, so it is done?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, call this meeting adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.